Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation. Noel Gray is here. She's the pastor at Integris Baptist Medical Center. So she'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Stone if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Pray with me. Wise and loving God, we thank you for this morning and for this place, for our city officials that do their work for us. We thank you for allowing them to be the voice of justice for those that sometimes have no voices. God, now we ask you to help us pray as you taught your disciples to pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Please face the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have so many outstanding teachers in the Oklahoma City metro area, you can imagine how difficult it is for us to select one. But we do it every month, and this month we have gone to the school district in Mustang. Chad, come on up. Chad Harper is our Teacher of the Month. He's with the Mustang Public School System. We have a resolution to honor Chad, and we'll hear more about him as the clerk reads.
Whereas Chad Harper's been named Teacher of the Month for February 2018 by the Mustang Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Chad grew up in Mustang, Oklahoma, and was drawn to teaching after trying out other careers, he desired something he believed would be more meaningful. Chad graduated from the University of Central Oklahoma in 1998 with a bachelor's in English Education and began teaching at Mustang High School in 1999. Whereas Chad taught communications until 2006, instructed an automotive and small engine mechanics class until 2012, and started the STEM class, Engineering Design, which he currently teaches. Whereas Chad serves on the state's Superintendent's Advisory Committee, sponsors the Engineering Club Technological Student Association, and also coaches high school varsity boys golf and varsity football. Whereas Chad was named one of the 12 finalists in the state for Oklahoma Teacher of the Year for 2017. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Chad Harper on his selection as February 2018 Teacher of the Month by the Mustang Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's have a motion. And a second. All right, let's see. The tense part of the meeting when we... Looks like you're in unanimous, let's chat. How about a round of applause for Chad?
Thank you very much. I'm deeply honored to get this resolution, and thank you so much for the support that you guys give to our education each and every day. Our kids are absolutely worth it. I would first like to give thanks to my wife, who is also a fellow teacher, and I'm going to tear her up. She teaches 7th grade, and she inspires me each and every day. And to see her sit up here with me, it means a lot. And to see my administrators and the support they give us is amazing, and the people of Mustang and Oklahoma City. I love you guys, and thank you, Mayor, very much.
I can tell how lucky the students are to have you. Chad, thanks very much. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Each month, we also choose an Employee of the Month, and the Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club helps us do that. And Carla Chapman is joining us today. Carla, come on up. Let's show a round of applause for Carla. Carla is a Personnel Specialist in the Labor Relations Division of the Personnel Department. We have a resolution, and let's the clerk to read it.
Whereas Carla Chapman has been a city employee for 11 years and is a Personnel Specialist in the Labor Relations Division of the Personnel Department. Whereas Carla is responsible for providing daily support to employees in city departments to help foster good employee and labor relations, and help ensure compliance and consistency with city policies. Whereas Carla conducts investigations of employee complaints under the city's policy prohibiting discrimination and sexual harassment, and provides training to all city employees. Carla represents the city at the Oklahoma Employment Security Commission and provides oversight of the city's FMLA policy to ensure compliance with federal law. Carla is always ready to assist employees with difficult situations and brings her calming influence to otherwise stressful situations with her knowledge, experience, and suggestions. Whereas Carla has the rare ability to find common ground as she mediates between parties and focuses on finding an agreement that benefits everyone, making her an invaluable asset to the city. Whereas this council desires to recognize Carla Chapman for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Carla Chapman, February 2018, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
All right, is there a motion? And a second. All right, let's vote for Carla's recommendation, and she's in. Congratulations. She was a revelation. All right. As we call the meeting to order, it looks like we're on Item 3C through F, a series of appointments. I'll look for a motion. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the journal for January 30th and February 6th, and 4B is to approve the journal for January 16th. All right. Cast your votes on the journal, passed unanimously. And Item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, outside of Item 9C, which is listed on the agenda as being stricken, on page 19, Item 9B, PUD 1664, the applicant has requested that that be continued until February 27th, that's in Ward 4. Again, PUD 1664 until two weeks from today, February 27th. And then on page 20, under Item 9E1B, 3600 Northwest 17th Street, where has said that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item F, 801 Southeast 70th Street, where has said that be stricken, the owner has secured. And then on Item 9F1C, 3600 Northwest 17th, where has said that be stricken, the owner has secured. And IH, 801 Southeast 70th Street, where has said that be stricken, again, the owner has secured.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? We have a series of revocable permits today. The first is Item 6A. It's a request with DG Productions to hold the Run Lucky 5K and Mission Mile Fund Run. Rick, come on up. Good morning. We'll need both of you to give us your name and address for the record, please.
Rick Ailing, 833 Northwest 41st Street.
Carrie Ralston with DG Productions, 17901 Briar Road in Walker.
All right, tell us about this run that's coming up.
This is our eighth year to do the Run Lucky 5K and One Mile Fund Run. We're a fundraiser for the Lukeem Illinois Foma Society. We've raised gobs of money for them, and it's always a great race, it's always a good time. It's our second year to do it in Midtown. This is our eighth year total.
And so if people want to sign up, what can they do?
Runlucky.com. They can sign up to our Facebook page, Run Lucky 5K, or...
DGroadracing.com.
DGroadracing.com, all the races that you all help participate. Well, thank you both for your work, and good luck. Hope a lot of people show up and contribute to a good cause.
I just hope it's warmer this year.
Yeah. Was it cold last year when you did it? Was it?
It's been cold almost every year.
Okay, well, maybe we'll get fortunate this year.
Yeah.
All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks. All right, Item 6B is a right-of-way use permit with McNelly's to hold the St. Patrick's Day Block Party. And it looks like Brian's here. Morning, Brian. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Brian Pittman, 2740 Northwest 21st.
All right, and tell us about the McNelly's St. Patrick's Day Block Party.
Ah, well, this is our ninth year of hosting our St. Patrick's Day celebration. It's on Saturday this year, which we're very excited about in the happening timeframe. We're looking to close off the road just north of Northwest 10th and Walker there. This is a... We've been doing this for like nine years straight now. We think we've got it down pat now, we think, but it's never... It's always a fun time and stuff, so we're excited about it being on Saturday and hope for the weather to be nice and warm again like it was last year.
Yeah, so St. Patrick's Day is on Saturday.
It is on the Saturday.
So that does make it work well. All right, is there a motion?
If you have a second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks and good luck. Item 6C is a right-of-way use permit with the Oklahoma Family Center for Autism to hold the Autism Oklahoma Peace Walk and 5K. Is there anyone here representing this organization today? All right, well, the race is in Ward 7. John, do you want to make a motion?
I'm voting.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 6D is a request with the Oklahoma Hall of Fame to hold the Oklahoma Hall of Fame Hustle 5K. And Jonathan Tully is here. Good morning, Jonathan. We'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Jonathan Tully. I live at 813 Phil's Way Northwest in Piedmont.
All right, well, tell us about the Hall of Fame Hustle 5K.
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Tully. I'm a junior at Piedmont High School and the vice chairman of the Oklahoma Hall of Fame Teen Board. We are holding our annual fundraiser on Saturday, March 3rd at 9:00 a.m., called the Hall of Fame Hustle. It's a 5K and one mile fun run that runs through historic heritage hills. This year's theme is going to be Dance Party, where we're going to highlight music from the 50s and 60s, the 80s, the 90s, and now. It is a... It's going to begin at the museum, the Gaylord Pickens Museum, where we will have a dance party immediately following the end of the race. There will be no road closures, and we have partnered with the Police Athletic League to provide officers for safety at the intersections and throughout the race. All proceeds from the race benefit our free field trip program. We provide field trips for roughly 7,500 students across the state and provide free Chick-fil-A or lunch... Free Chick-fil-A lunch or gas stipend.
Wonderful. Well, thanks for your work on that, and please thank all your friends who were a part of that youth organization. Is there a motion?
If you have a second.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck. All right, Item 6E is a revocable right-of-way use permit with Stockyard City Main Street to hold the Stockyard City St. Patrick's Day Parade. And Kelly Payne? Kelly, did I get the name right? Is it Payne?
Yes.
Yeah, nice to see you.
Thank you.
We'll need your name and address for the record.
Kelly Payne, 1307B, South Agnew, Oklahoma City.
All right, tell us about the St. Patrick's Day Parade this year.
We are thrilled to partner with the O'Klahoma Irish Heritage Association. This is an inaugural event for Stockyard City. This group, 40 years ago in 1978, did an impromptu parade in downtown. They realized they didn't have a permit after they were stopped. We've come a long way since then. They were looking for a new area to host, and we are just delighted to have them. We're combining our Western heritage and our Irish heritage, and just thrilled to be able to host this in partnership with them on truly St. Patrick's Day, March 17th.
All right, so everyone's invited down to...
You bet.
South Agnew Avenue to see the parade on March 17th. What time will that start?
At 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, okay. And you're hoping for good weather, too?
You bet we are, and it's the same parade route that we have for Cowboy Christmas as well, so if it's not broke, we're not going to fix it. Just keep doing what we do.
Good luck with it. How about a motion?
If you have a second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thanks. All right, Item 6F is a request with the Professional Basketball Club LLC to hold the Thunder Run, and this would be February 24th. And Heather Brown is here. Heather, come on up. Tell us about the Thunder Run.
Hi, I'm Heather Brown. Address is 208 Thunder Drive. And the Thunder Run is going to be our first annual event this time around. It's going to be February 24th, starting at 9:00 a.m. for the Rumble Fun Run, and then our 5K will start at 9:30. It'll go downtown Oklahoma City and will actually end in the arena on the court, which is kind of fun for our fans and local city members to partake in.
Is Rumble going to run?
He will be present. I don't think he will run.
All right. Well, we're challenging him personally here.
I would like to see that, but he might get exhausted with that vast suit on.
Yeah, it's pretty big. He's in pretty good shape, though.
Mm-hmm.
All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks and good luck. All right, we'll reset the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. It's like there are four items with a motion and a second. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCMFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Again, four items. Comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Three items this morning.
If you have a second.
All right, comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
If you have a second.
All right, are there any individual considerations? All right.
Mayor, I want to highlight the LA Dodgers. They're doing a... An item AM. They're working to present a OK Dodgers Rookie League at Woodson Park. So that's a good thing. I'm sorry, Wheeler Park.
Wheeler Park. All right, ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Are there people here? Oh, and Michael's here. Good morning. We just finished. You're good to go.
Tom and I were watching you.
Oh, okay. All right. That puts us on to the concurrence docket. We have a motion and a second. All right, any comments or questions on the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right, Item 9 is items that require a separate vote. We'll start with Item 9A, and we're closing part of an alley here in Ward 7. John, you okay with this?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk. Anyone sign up to speak? No one signed up to speak. I move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on Item 9A. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9B, is that item going to be deferred?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I need a motion to defer, or was it deferred at the beginning?
We deferred it.
Okay, it's been deferred until February 27th. 9B deferred until February 27th. Item 9C has been struck from the council agenda, so we'll move on to 9D, and this is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under dilapidated structures?
If you have a second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E?
If you have a second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9F?
If you have a second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9G would be our collective bargaining agreement with the Paternal Order of Police.
If you have a second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the public? All right, congratulations. Thank you. Passes unanimously. I'll note that Mark and John are here. Thank you all for your cooperation this year. We appreciate it very much. Glad to see this behind us. All right, Item 9H. I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
That's correct.
All right, how about a motion?
If you have a second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9R... I'm sorry, 9I. How about a motion on 9I? We do not need executive session on this item.
If you have a second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9J, I guess we do need executive session on this item, so a motion to move it into executive session would be in order?
Executive session.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And 9K, it looks like we do need executive session. How about a motion here?
If you have a second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And 9L, I understand we do need executive session. Is there a motion here on 9L? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And 9M, it's claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, how about a motion? And a second. All right, cast your votes on 9M, and it passes unanimously. Item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of these items? All right, Mark, and a motion, how about a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 11 is items from council, and Ed, you have an item that you're wanting to address.
Today's just voting to move it forward and have a public hearing on February 27th. I would hope that concurrently we could put it on the state legislative agenda and just talk, try and get discussion at the state level about clarifying language.
Yeah, and so I guess could they do a couple of things? One, they could change the language, or another might be just to allow local municipalities to make it on their own?
Heaven forbid, but yes.
Okay. Yeah, so that... Let's put that on the legislative agenda for discussion.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
So again, there would be no change in law in Oklahoma City, it's just that it would... State law and city law are the same, so you'd remove city law. So we're just moving forward to a public hearing today.
All right, item being introduced today and set for a public hearing, as Ed said, on February 27th. At this point, a final hearing and adoption would be scheduled for March 13th. Let's continue items from council. James, you have anything? All right, Ed, anything else?
We need to vote on introduction.
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you for collecting it. Ed, you want to make the motion? Second? All right, cast your votes. It passes 5-3. All right, let's see. Larry, do you have anything for us today? All right, Mr. Stone?
Just wanted to remind everyone to go out and vote today and exercise one of the greatest rights that we have in this country. Thank you.
David?
Okay, if I may just read a couple... I'm sorry. If I may just read a couple of comments. So a charter school is a free public school of choice that operates under a contract agreeing to meet certain goals and follow set guidelines in exchange for exemptions from some governmental rules and regulations, often started by parents or other community members who see a need for a different method or approach to public education. Since charter schools are public schools, they are still required to participate in state testing. Now, charter schools can create some controversy at times, and two of the negatives that are brought out against charter schools is that they can be somewhat selective in who they allow to attend that particular charter school. The other issue is if there's not good oversight and accountability, sometimes those goals that are set up initially with a charter school are not met, and then also, they also can fall into financial difficulties. So those are basically the only two negatives that I'm aware of pertaining to charter schools in general. As it relates to Oklahoma City Public School District and what I'm proposing to at least begin a discussion, should not be interpreted as being critical of any current or past members of the administration or the board. All I'm saying is the Oklahoma City Public School System is faced with so many challenges right now that the traditional way of operating and providing education is just not working very well. And so what I think should at least begin to be discussed is the concept of not just another charter school, but converting the Oklahoma City Public School into a public school district into a charter school district. So what that... The main benefit that provides is instead of the individual board members currently running for the seat, they would become appointed members, and the adopting organization that or sponsoring organization could be the city of Oklahoma City. And the benefit that that would provide is you would have the ability to attract board members from a variety of different backgrounds. You could bring in professors of education, you could bring in engineers, architects, scientists, and those board members, I'm sure, would want to focus on the development of a strong STEM program. You could bring in artists, you could bring in entrepreneurs, you know, business executives who would help manage the organization, which is a very large organization, that would not even think about running for the school board. You know, they just don't want to go through that process. But to be appointed and to expand that board to say 12 to 15 to 18 members and draw upon all those expertise, and we would say, please leave your politics at the door, and the focus with all these gifted individuals would be how can we improve the education system for students here in the Oklahoma City Public School System? Then on top of that, with us being the sponsoring organization, we could lend support to the overall operation. Mr. Couch and his Office of City Manager could assist with the overall administration and management of the charter school system. Eric Winger in Public Works could assist with the facilities, not be responsible, but lend their expertise. And one thing that we've demonstrated, it was truly brought out last week, is that the city of Oklahoma City has a great group of individuals leading the city. They've been able to operate in very difficult, challenging times, as well as, you know, in times when we're a little bit better off. So we've got that expertise that we can lend to the public school system. And by having a district-wide charter system, we've eliminated that one common complaint of, oh, you're only selecting certain students to come to your charter school, so of course you're going to do better. And then secondly, with our sponsorship, we're going to hold them accountable to make sure they meet those guidelines in terms of, you know, improving the overall education system for the children, as well as making sure they're sound financially. Again, this is not meant to be critical of any current or past member of the board or administration. I just believe the challenges facing the Oklahoma City Public School District are great. There's... They're numerous, and while many of the other school districts, especially around Oklahoma City and certainly Tulsa would fall into this, too, have similar type challenges, we've got them at a much larger level. And so we've got many times over 90 to 95% of the students being on free or reduced meals. Many times they come from the non-traditional family setting where both parents are there, you know. We even have a large number of homeless children attending school. So when you put together all of those challenges facing the Oklahoma City Public School System, I think it just requires something other than status quo. I don't think we'll ever be able to achieve the results we'd like to under the current system. So all I'm proposing is that we look at a different system to operate, and like with any organization, it starts with the top. So if you've got a great board who then goes out and hires a great administrator, and then you've got support of the city of Oklahoma City government, I think you would get a lot more support and involvement from the entire community. We do a great job with accessing volunteers when it comes to various city projects. I think that would continue on at a much higher level with respect to the Oklahoma City Public School System. And we've demonstrated, when we put together an oversight board, and I'm talking mainly with respect to the MAPS oversight, they do a great job. You know, they're very accountable, they're very transparent. You know, they're very accountable, they're very transparent, they're very accessible by the public. So, it meets all the issues, in my opinion, that a school district needs to have to be successful. So, anytime a new idea is presented, there's, there's going to be a rush as to why it won't work, and a lot of criticism to be shared, and especially from the unions. But I just would ask that they truly think about this, because if you asked their members, that being the teachers, I think they would love to see a board made up of, of experts in the particular subject matter that they're teaching, and also who have a true concern for the environment they're having to operate in. I think the teachers would be very, would respond to this very favorably, hopefully the students would too, and I think the general public would too. And then, we, the City of Oklahoma City, are the ultimate beneficiaries, because now we've got a much better public school system. We're much more attractive as far as economic development, when we've got perhaps the premier school district in the state versus one of the more challenging school districts. So, I'm just throwing that out. I hope the discussion continues, and we'll see how this goes. Thank you.
John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To add on to Councilman Greenwell's comment, I think there's an idea that we do need to take a strong look at. I am heavily involved in Charter School KIP, which is the number-one performance school in the state of Oklahoma. So, the idea of the city getting involved in education, I think we do need to take a stronger look. I do believe that the state law needs to be changed, so we can give, figure out a way to give financial support for teacher pay increase. I think Councilman Shadi was right on track, trying to figure out a way for the city to get involved, but I do believe the state law needs to be changed, unlike the state law was changed when we started the whole MAPS for kids. One of the hesitations that I do have in regards to the whole charter school stuff for Oklahoma City Public Schools, if we go down that route, I definitely would like to see the, the opportunity to make sure that teachers and support staff and professionals, I want to make sure that they are able to organize. You know, some charter school models, teachers and support staff and professional staff, they are not able to organize, so that's something, you know, I'm a union guy, and I just want to make sure, you know, as we continue that conversation, that we do include some of the unions in that process. Midway Public Schools went to a conversion. They're, going on the top of my head now, they're elementary school, the, in another year or two, will be a conversion school, a charter school conversion. They went to that model, so they can do some of the same things as David stated, but I think we do need to look at our options when it comes to improving education in Oklahoma City.
Mark?
Not to interrupt you, but this is Black History Month, and I do want to honor the late Charles Atkins, who was the first African-American to serve as a city councilman in Oklahoma City. It was a court ruling that forced the City of Oklahoma City to have an African-American councilperson. That was in nineteen sixty-six, and then in nineteen sixty-nine, the first African-American was elected, and that was Dr. Dow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. In conjunction with Neighborhood Alliance, last Saturday, we had an Oklahoma City Leadership Conference that was really well-attended, and I want to publicly thank our staff that did an outstanding job. I want to thank the mayor for speaking, I want to thank Mr. Couch for speaking, and I want to thank John for attending. It was a great event, great turnout, and once again, thank you, staff.
All right, City Manager Reports.
First up, we have Mike Carrier from CVB here to give us a quarterly update.
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, sir. Mr. Couch, thank you. Council members, good to see you again. I believe you all have received our report on the second quarter. Tourism business in Oklahoma City continues to be strong and well-received. We are seeing significant interest in what's happening here in terms of new assets coming in the near future, and people wanting to know about those assets and their ability to book them. So, we're looking forward to continuing to move forward as we, as we get into the second half of the year, and in fact, have already seen some results from that. We are about where we feel like we should be at the end of the second quarter. Our hotel tax is up significantly over what we had projected for this year, so overall business is good. The visitor segment, as opposed to the meeting segment, the visitor segment is doing extremely well. The meeting segment is doing very nicely. I don't mean to suggest that it's not, but the visitor segment is doing quite well. Our equine efforts over the, the second quarter, which is the time when we, of the, the fourth quarter of the calendar year, the second quarter of our year, that is the time when we typically see the largest numbers because of the very significant international horse shows. It was interesting to note, this year, the National Raining Horse Association Futurity starts on Thanksgiving Day every year. This year, they had attendees, participants, trainers, exhibitors, every different category from twenty-five countries outside the United States, you know, which is a phenomenal comment about Oklahoma City, about the Raining Association, about what we've done here in our equine world, and the way we are received. I've made the comment before, but it was particularly telling this year, when you walk through the arena, particularly on Friday and Saturday nights, the last two championship nights, it was hard to understand most of what was being said as you walked around the arena, because there were so many foreign languages being spoken, which is really nice to see and to hear in Oklahoma City. Raining Horse just had their annual convention here last weekend at the Skirvin, and invited me to attend some of their meetings and their, their Hall of Fame banquets and awards banquets. I will tell you that those folks absolutely love Oklahoma City. They enjoy coming here because of the way they're treated, and particularly because of what council and our citizens have done to help make the facilities there what they are today, and to continue to look, look forward at how we're going to continue to improve them. But we're very pleased with what's happening. We look forward to a great third quarter of, of our year. It has started off strong. We see no reason to expect it to, to change in, in terms of what we see coming down the pike and how we're able to, to continue to book business. So, be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
All right, questions for Mike? All right, well, Mike, congratulations, getting those hotel nights increased, I know is a goal of yours, and of course, the city councils as well, and we're becoming a larger and larger host to more and more people, so thanks for all your work, and please pass along our appreciation to your staff.
I will, sir. It, just if I may, one quick comment about that. At the end of last calendar year, we had added a hundred and twenty thousand new hotel room nights to our inventory in two thousand seventeen. We sold two hundred and five thousand more room nights than we had sold the prior year. So, we absorbed every one of those new room nights, plus added more, and that's, you know, that, that's hard to do, and we're very fortunate as a community that our, our business overall continues to be strong. So, thank you, sir. We appreciate your all's support.
All right, thanks, Mike.
We also have a report this morning on item D, which is our Revenue Enhancement Program, and Matt Bosz is here from the City Treasurer's Office.
Good morning, and I am going to cover the first six months of fiscal year two thousand and eighteen for the Revenue Enforcement Program. Essentially, that is where, in the City Treasurer's Office, we look at the various taxes that come in, just to make sure that Oklahoma City is getting the correct amount. So far, from the first six months of the fiscal year, it's yielded two hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars in additional taxes. So, I'll give you some of the details on that. The first would be our sales and use tax compliance leads. That's essentially where, primarily where our staff will take a look at the detail from the taxes that are remitted, just to make sure, does everything look like it makes sense, doing some analysis, is there anything that's missing in there? One thing I would add, that one of the consistent beneficiaries we have from this is when people bring us receipts. We've had members of the council, we've had staff members, and Oklahoma City residents that have said, hey, I was shopping in Oklahoma City, and it doesn't look like they're charging the correct amount. And it's amazing how many times those come in through our office, and that will yield additional taxes for Oklahoma City. And next is our Independent Audit Program. If you look at that right now, through the first six months, we've collected about twenty-eight thousand dollars. Now, this is a little bit shy of what we have in prior years, and our cost-to-recovery ratio is smaller than what we're typically used to. No, no need to panic with that. We do have three very large audits that are in various stages of protest. Essentially, what that means is, once a audit has been completed, submitted to the Tax Commission, the taxpayer then has the option to protest that if they need to, and that can delay the process from ninety days to, we've seen some cases drag out over a year. And so, we still feel pretty confident. In the history of this program, in the last three years, each dollar we've spent has generated an initial five dollars in sales taxes, and we feel confident by the end of the fiscal year, we'll be closer to that historical average. To, to further prove that point, one aspect of this program is, you know, because the sales taxes comes in, the state benefits from that as well, and annually, we'll submit an invoice to the Tax Commission, because they will pay for part of, they will reimburse us for the cost of the audits, because they benefit as well. If you factor that into it, we're around a dollar ninety-four per dollar spent, so almost two dollars for each dollar we've spent. And next would be our Hotel Tax Collections. That is where our staff reviews the hotel taxes that come in, look at the exemptions to make sure exemptions are being claimed properly, looking at math errors, eligibility-type things with that. Another aspect of that is that we've had a few delinquent hotels that we've signed promissory notes with. Those additional collections that have come through are reported in these numbers, as well as our first few months of home-sharing collections. One aspect of our program that a few years ago was our biggest piece, has now dwindled down. You can see through six months, ten thousand dollars for boundary reviews. That's essentially where we look at the outlying areas, just to make sure that taxpayers are remitting to Oklahoma City properly. And that has changed, because the Oklahoma Tax Commission now has a computerized system for registration. That has taken the number of inaccuracies we've seen to almost nothing, and so, we, we continue to monitor that. We'll run this report about once a year, but it just kind of shows how this program evolves. To catch some other areas, one new thing that we worked on, we noticed that there was some risk for businesses that are located outside of Oklahoma City that deliver into Oklahoma City. Think about things like furniture, think about other things that have a high delivery rate, because we had found some businesses that were making a lot of deliveries into Oklahoma City, but never paying Oklahoma City sales tax. And so, with the help of the Tax Commission, we've developed a new report that we can analyze that and look at those, specifically those industries that would have a high degree of deliveries, and make sure that they're remitting to that. We've submitted about ten leads so far to the Tax Commission, and I imagine that number will increase as we move a little bit further with this process. Finally, one new thing that we've looked at is property taxes. Now, and as you know, in the state of Oklahoma, we're not allowed to use property taxes for operations. However, we do utilize the property taxes for municipal bond projects. Through a review, along with working with the Oklahoma County Assessor, we identified around eighty-five properties that were in Oklahoma City limits, that should have been paying Oklahoma City property taxes. In some of the cases, they were not paying, and their neighbor was paying property taxes. We worked with the County Assessor's Office, we looked at those, they have included those in the current year's assessment roll, and so, for, when we report this to you at the end of the year, end of the fiscal year, we will include about an additional twenty-seven thousand dollars in additional property taxes. And one thing to note, is, as many of the aspects of this program, it'll benefit us this year, but it'll also benefit us for, for years to come. So, over the next decade, with the appreciation of property values, these eighty-five properties could generate additional three hundred thousand dollars in property taxes for Oklahoma City. And, and so, because of the success of that, we've shifted to Cleveland County to look to see if there's other issues with that as well. We've identified some, and we're currently working with the Cleveland County Assessor's Office to see if we can identify some more of those type properties, and I hope to have an update for you when we give you the year-end report. With that, I can take any questions.
Are there any plans to include Canadian County in there?
That, that would be the next step from there. We're just kind of taking it one at a time. We're still kind of developing this process, and it's the first time we've looked at it. We're just taking it one, one county at a time.
All right, Matt, thanks.
Last thing, well, there's a couple of other reports. We'd be happy to answer any questions, but a couple of weeks ago, we had a report on the, on the streetcar, and, you know, the track, downtown's got a couple of challenges right now with, with traffic flow, but, but we're over six, well over sixty percent of the track is installed, maintenance facility is, is completed. And today, streetcar number one will be delivered to the maintenance facility at about eleven o'clock, a couple hours away from arrival of the first streetcar, and then subsequent, subsequent streetcars will be delivered every, every several weeks after that, so, kind of a landmark date, and it, it's a very visual, at least, mark of the success of MAPS three and, and the streetcar.
All right, citizens to be heard. Mark Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark Nelson, sixteen twenty-four South Agnew. I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank you, Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and each of you city councilors for approving our contract today, and wanted to make a couple comments, that as we've, as an FOP, or as an organization, have tried to work together over the last several months, a kind of step out of our proverbial comfort zone, I, I think we've accomplished that, and internally, it hasn't been met without some skepticism and even at times anxiety, but given the commitment to public safety, but by adding the officers over the last several months, and approving the contract, which makes the working conditions of current, and even future officers, a good package to come work under. I think those actions and efforts to work together are made much easier. So, just wanted to publicly say thank you. It, it is not, it's not lost on us the value of a good relationship and, and continuing the efforts and growth of the city, so thank you very much.
Mark, thank you. Please pass along our appreciation to your members. All right, Rodney Emanuel are here. Come on up.
My name is Rodney Kirk. Address twenty-three twenty-eight North Missouri, here in Oklahoma City, seven three one one one. This is my grandson Emanuel. This is Emanuel's third city council meeting. He got time and patience, just like his grandpa. He's going to be good. I'd like to say, plans for the near, near future. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to open up a school where I can teach kids some lifetime skills. I have some property on the northeast side of town, and I'll try to get the building built forty by thirty-five. I already got some instructors, instructors lined up. Freddie Edwards, retired from Tinkerville. Ronnie Harmon, retired plumber. Gary Rogers, retired maintenance repairman for some of Bear Switz, Bear Switz's property in Norman. And Johnny Jordan, retired radio disc jockey. Mr. Amos, he does small engines repairs. Gerald Kirk, he does vacuum cleaning. These are the skills we're going to try to teach them, hands-on, something they can learn and do for people. Throughout the years, years ago, Tim Tolliver, he worked here at the city. Muhammad Ali was coming to town. They know that I drove Cadillacs, always had two at a young age. So, Tim come to me, said, Ryan, can you, he thought you could bring two Cadillac to pick up Muhammad Ali at the airport. So, went down, Wayne Clark, he worked for Daubert Evans Cadillac. Rodell Hornbeck, worked for Daubert Evans Cadillac. One sold me a Cadillac in the middle of the year, one sold me a one at the end of the year. So, I talked to Wayne and Rodell. Daubert Evans gave me four convertibles to pick up Muhammad Ali, because that's when he came, had an exhibition here in Oklahoma City, and he, he jogged around the areas of northeast side of town, but he loved the northeast side of town, but he loved the flow show. So we have a list of, of brand-new Cadillacs just riding around. They were used Cadillac, they weren't brand-new, but they're working, brand-new to us. And I was supposed to bring Khalil. I want her to tell you personally what they did in Arkansas. She's, she's a gymnast out of Dynamo Gymnastic Team up on the Hefner and Rock Council Road. They're going to be competing here in Oklahoma City this coming Friday. One month ago, when I told you I was going to have her to come, they won first place at Dynamo Gym in Arkansas. Three weeks ago, they won first place in Las Vegas, and their age groups. And two weeks ago, they won first place here, second place here in Oklahoma City with their gymnastic team. It's a great, a great gymnastic squad that you have here in Oklahoma City. They're good. And I'd also like to say thanks to Kenan and Sherri Sloan. They helped me raise some of my greatest grandkids. They helped me raise them. Timothy, Trey, Todd, and Sean, they're all successful. They're good. Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to wish you well on your new journey. I wish you well. Y'all, at the council, y'all did so well for this city. It's really grown, and I'd like to say, we just come out and say thank you. Y'all have a good day.
All right, thank you. Emanuel? Hey, thanks for coming by. I know it's Black History Month, and your grandfather probably wouldn't tell you, but he's a part of black history in this city. You should be very proud of him.
Thank you.
All right, you bet. Not to you, Ronnie. We have executive session, we'll be back.